All right, good evening. We're going to call this Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting to Order. It's 5:41 PM. And we had an invocation by Dr. Evans this evening, who has chaired over the meeting and the food as well. So we're going to move on to item number two. Roll call.
Misty Knell?
Here.
Jordan Canuho?
Here.
George Gardapee here. Carol Chapman?
Here.
Cynthia Butler?
Here.
Donna here?
Deekatu.
Deekatu.
Jean Evans?
Here.
Sammy Kimball?
Here.
Okay, item number three, approval of agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I did, I did want to say that in the future, to everybody out there, we will not be adding anything to our agendas unless it's 48 hours prior to our meetings. The only thing we'll change is if we need to remove an item. And I just wanted everybody to know that that's what we're going to do from now on.
Any other comments?
Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Vice President Canuho, second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapee, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here? Donna here? You're on mute if...
Yes.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number four, approval of minutes. Item number one, approval of Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for May 28, 2024. Are there any additions or corrections needing to be made? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 28, 2024.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Secretary Gardapee, second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapee, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, next item we have, number two, approval of Pawnee Business Council Quarterly Meeting Minutes for June 1, 2024. Are there any corrections needing to be made? If not, we'll all entertain a motion to approve the quarterly meeting minutes for June 1, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Secretary Gardapee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapee, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number three, approval of Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for June 4, 2024. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 4, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Secretary Gardapee, second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapee, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number four, approval of Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for June 18, 2024. Are any corrections or revisions needing to be made? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 18, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Secretary Gardapee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Stay.
George Gardapee, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number five, PDC travel report and request. Do we have any travel report, travel requests? I have land for tomorrow for the OITA meeting. It is to be held at the United Ktuwa Band in Telequal. And the agenda... We'll discuss the tribal tag issue, the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority issue, Intertribal Tax Association update with Mary Mashunkashay, Oklahoma Legislative Interim Studies, voter participation that they're wanting to update on, oil and gas severance tax. And then we also have discussed with Mary about getting with OITA to discuss or bring back to the table the Yakama tribe to further discuss the Cougar Den issue. She is wanting to know if other tribes have, well, she as well as us is wanting to know if other tribes have reached out to them since then and trying to find out how things are going, if they ran into any issues, if there's any other local tribes that have been participating in order to try to, you know, find a solution or a recommended solution for addressing our tobacco and maybe potentially even our gasoline needs, so.
So, I'm sorry, Misty, I didn't actually understand or hear you. So, she's vetting to, she's, she is researching other tribes that have maybe done business with them?
Yes, she wants to bring that to OITA, to the OITA table and this National Intertribal Tax Association to bring, because they brought them in and they did the presentation first. But now they're wanting to bring them back in because the Supreme Court decision, you know, everybody knows about the Supreme Court decision and see what tribes have actually reached out to them or if they actually have any kind of agreements with tribal nations to utilize their services for transportation.
Right, I would really like to have that happen before we even consider business.
Oh yeah, I mean, that will need to be done before anybody makes a decision.
Okay, good.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to approve the travel for OITA.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilor, Vice President Canuho, second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapee, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number six, under Old Business Discussion and/or Action on Community Power Accelerator Memorandum of Understanding with Tribu Quin Corporation.
President, I'll present on this this evening. In our work group, we discussed quite a bit of this and we had some revisions to the MOU on what we wanted to do. And so on that revisions, I appreciate Councilwoman Butler and also working with our Planning Director, Chris McCray, on getting these revisions done. And so with that, in the MOU, what we went ahead and did was took out Tribal Utility LLC under the purpose and scope and replaced that with the Pawnee Nation. And so it reads, the Pawnee Nation with it, within its Pawnee Nation codes. Instead of tribal, we just took out the tribal, we struck that and said Pawnee Nation codes, including its Associate Governance and Operation documents. And so we followed suit with that. And if you follow down on item number three, responsibilities and the parties, under party two, responsibilities, we maintain that same language there, which is for the Pawnee Nation and struck the Tribal Utility LLC. And then we added on that last part there, also again Pawnee Nation codes. And then on the second page, we added principal contacts, added President Nodles information on there for the Pawnee Nation. And so we addressed a lot of the questions in our work group as far as what the structure is. And just to kind of give an overview on that once again. So back in October, we had a letter of support that Pawnee Nation voted to approve and send. And so we sent that for this as Tribu Quint was working to obtain funding from the DOE to do this sort of Featherlight co-op. It's a modeled structure that they're going to do to help tribes attain funding, build out feasibility, or feasibility, but interconnection and also maintenance and workforce development. And with Featherlight, what they're doing is use, they're wanting to work with Pawnee Nation and lower Sioux, lower, y'all say, uh? Lower Sioux.
Lower Brul.
Okay, working with them as well to be able to do this. And kind of this is going to be like the model of working with other tribes is just kind of using that Featherlight model in that sense there. And so what we'll do is work with Featherlight on this and to obtain funding to build out a five-megawatt facility. And that'll be another tabled item on the old business that we'll look at is the land just east of us here that will be, that will be used for that five-megawatt system. And that will be to help with our utilities, but also too, will be connected into the, to the grid as well, which we can actually, if we have more than what's needed in our system, we can actually look at selling back as well, which is part of the interconnection agreements and those types of things. We can sell back to the grid. And so it could be revenue generating for the, for the nation as well. And so those are the, those are the things we discussed in the work group. And so we're bringing this back tonight just to offer any other discussion, any questions, and then hopefully have a motion to approve at this point.
Vice President Canuho, I have a question.
Sure.
So, party two responsibilities, bottom of page one, second bullet, provide expertise, comma, support, and lead in the formation of a Pawnee Nation Tribal Utility LLC. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is, that is correct. And so...
So we are going to move forward with doing that?
Do what now?
We are going to move forward with creating that LLC.
We will, once we get to that point, to be able to do that, to create the LLC. What the LLC is, and I'm glad you brought that up too, what the LLC is going to be is it's going to be the company that's going to actually, actually hold and maintain the assets, which is going to be that. And so it won't probably be named Tribal Utility LLC. It's kind of more of just a placeholder there for that in the MOU. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any further questions for the Community Power Accelerator MOU? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to either approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler, second by Councilwoman Kimball. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapee, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, the next item we have is item number six-two, approval of Resolution 2442, Community Power Accelerator Land Allocation, which is associated with the item that we just passed.
I can present on this too, President. This, as I mentioned earlier, goes along with the MOU that we had here. This is to allocate the land that is just east of the building that we're currently in right now. In the third, whereas Division of Planning and Tribal Development is requesting a land allocation for the Community Power Accelerator project that is located on an allotment ID number T2000, Pawnee Nation Reserve at approximately, and it gives the coordinates there, 36.34707 north, 96.78634 west, for constructing and installing and maintaining a five-megawatt solar array. And so the map is attached for this as well. And this is going to be proposed for a five-year allocation. And it's dependent on securing the funding and the project moving forward. The last whereas, well, actually, I'll read the other whereas. Whereas this proposed project is for five years to secure funding, design and build the Community Power Accelerator. And whereas the Land Management and Property Committee has met and recommended the land site contingent, if the project goals are met, this land allocation will expire five years after due date of resolution or is rescinded if the project has, is not going any further. And I, and I do appreciate Councilwoman Butler also taking the time to work on the wording for this as well.
I just have a comment, I guess you'd say. Can we strike in that last whereas? Strike if the project goals are met and put upon the project goals being met?
Where's this coming from? Who's recommending that?
President.
It's the same thing, but it just flows a little bit more better.
Will expire after date of resolution or is rescinded if project is no longer feasible.
And then how are you, how are you going to monitor that?
Why, why would we change that?
It's a suggestion. What was it discussed, how it's going to be monitored? My, my question is, and how is that going to be monitored?
How is, how is it going to be monitored to ensure that it's moving forward, I guess, is what you're asking.
How the project goals are being met, because it hasn't, it hasn't been written yet, has it?
No, I would assume that might be covered in the MOU.
And this solar project, by the way, is the one that is off the ground, right? So that we can still have cattle or whatever we ag or whatever it is we need, right?
Those are good questions. I can ask on, President, on your question, on how we would be able to monitor that or at least see how those goals are being met and get back to you on that. As far as the cattle is what you're asking, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the audience know that actually they're going to be raised as solar units. They're going to be raised up off the ground so we can have cattle or ag or whatever this we want to do.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good point, too. One of the other areas that, that is being explored as well, and I'm, I think, I don't know if it's our ag division. Actually, it is, our ag division, along with our planning, is looking at agrobiotics as well, just to kind of incorporate what you're saying there. So, I think that's what you mean, right, is you, okay, you're on top of it, you're on top of it, okay. Okay.
Vice President?
Yes.
In addition to what she said, just for me, kind of like, are we going to be assured that the land will be reusable again after, you know, if it should not happen? Yeah, yeah, that it's environmentally, will remain the same land.
Okay, let me add one word, don't do that. Because we have, we have the MOU, then we have the land allocation, which is needed.
Right.
You know, for, to designate for the land. But then, once this is approved and the project and the funding gets approved, then would it go through property to have a lease for the, for the project? Because the issues that you're bringing about, Treasurer Chapman, those would be covered in a lease. You know, for like, if the project is completed or, you know, should, hopefully not. But if it should fail, that they're able to come in and also respond, they're also responsible for the cleanup and return the land as it was. So that would be another issue is for it to go through to have a lease for that allocation.
So we shouldn't be, like I said, I'm going to muddy the waters and I'm all for it. But, so we shouldn't really be doing a land allocation. We should be doing something that says we're going after the funding. And that's all this resolution should say, because then after we get the funding, if the funding is secured, then we do a lease. So I think we're doing it before...
I think, I think we can just say contingent?
Yeah, I guess, I mean...
Just a contingency?
It would be like as, you know, if we're submitting a grant and that grant requires us to allocate certain land, how would that kind of be worded in that type of allocation?
Because we need this to move forward with the, the grant.
Exactly, so we, and I see in that last whereas where it says the land site is contingent and Misty used recommended upon the project goals are met. Is that what she said, just to add, to change if to upon? This land allocation will expire five years and then, so it's just... They would still have to come back for that lease, right? Because we would have to approve a lease for them. And so we would just have to make sure that Donna and Sammy know that in their property committee meetings that they need to do a lease if we get this funding, that that's on the table, that it needs to happen. And then I would assume, since it's coming from planning, that it would go through the planning office to monitor? So would it be something that Grants and Contracts does? Just to answer the question on who's monitoring or who's actually being accountable for the, no, for the project? Would, would that be my assumption? I'm just making that assumption that it would be and that since it's coming from planning, that that's what they're going to take care of, the monitoring of it? I would assume.
That's what I assume, because the other one's requesting the land allocation.
Yeah, and I think too, in that as well, as it talks about in the MOU is, where does it say that? Collaborate with party one to ensure working compliance with Pawnee Nation codes, identify suitable in areas that can be leased in support of renewable energy project, projects, and then support workforce development. So they will be working alongside with us. And so in that, I think it would be working with planning and to, to ensure those project goals are being met.
Because, because I would assume that this would have also had a whereas to say that the planning committee had met and this proposal has gone through the process of planning, they're making the recommendation to move forward. We're just missing that element. So whenever, anytime we go after funding, if we need that, I would like to just... I, I would like to just make sure that we're doing those processes. Yes, you gotta go through planning for the proposal if we're going after funding, correct? Cause we do proposal review. Then, after you do that, then you go to Land Management and request your land, because you're going after this that the proposal review had already said, hey, let's go after the funding. So I'm just, I'm trying to rationalize it in my head, but this is how I think our processes should go, but we've really, really gotta start getting back to doing these things, because then we have all these questions.
We need to, we need to see those processes.
And, and they need to be developed as well, strengthened, because I feel, I feel like we always, when we go after funding, we leave out proposal review process, and that's the Planning Committee. So we're cutting that person out to vet this, to get to our level, to be all like, okay, this has been looked at by all these people and all these eyes, just like how we do budget, just how we do land property, all of them, we need to utilize our committees more. I'm sorry, I don't mean to get on my soapbox, but just pointing that out.
Yeah, and, and I'm good with it as it is.
I agree.
Yeah, it, it's a good resolution. I don't wanna, I don't wanna stymie anything. I'd rather move it forward and let's just work on the background and shore it up.
Yeah.
As we move forward.
We just need to get there.
I'll make a recommendation to approve Resolution 2442.
I'll second.
For?
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kimball, second by Councilwoman Butler. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garderpe, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
And, and can I just make mention that I'm not trying to get on to anybody or say anything? It's just, we have a new planning director, and maybe these are things that he can work on, since this is coming from him as well, to create those processes on how he wants to see things like this come through, because, and, and to stick with them, and to write them down, so that everybody knows, council included, that when we go after funding, this is the process we would like to, to go by. Thank you, sorry, it just, it just needs to be said.
And that's, that's the case, too. I mean, I, I understand those things will be needed, and I think too, is working with our Planning Committee, we could probably get something together, we, where, it'll be more streamlined in the future for that.
Yes, and that's what I was gonna say, that the committees can create those processes.
Well, that's something that, for, as the Chair of the Planning Committee, maybe that's what needs to be discussed, because I can see why it's coming through this way, because this proposal hasn't been written yet, but yet, we're trying to have the MOU, because we know that that's necessary or required when we're seeking out funding. And so basically, it's authorizing them to seek out the funding and then look for sources to actually develop this solar farm. And the way that we have, our current process works is you actually have a proposal first, and then go through the planning process, and then identify whether you have a MOU, land allocation, and those types of things, and then, of course, meet the requirements within the NOFA, is there cost match, you know, associated? So I can see how this process, it's still trying to work its way through our internal systems, however, it's just a different approach.
Yeah.
But it's, it's still the same thing, and it still will go through planning.
That's exactly how I was trying to say it, too. No, I understand it, thank you.
Item number seven, new business. Item one, Budget Committee Recommendation. Item A, Approval of 3110 Tribal Energy Development Capacity Budget. Treasurer Chapman?
Yes. The Notice of Award is in the packet. This is a project that has been in the works with Brian Kirk Cruz here tonight, and it is funded by the BIA, and it's the Pawnee Nation Tribal Energy Development, Development Capacity Program, and it is an award of $150,000. This is, the purpose of this is, the study will offer a clear picture to the Pawnee Nation that will recommend actionable steps so that the tribe may take an informed approach forward. Capacity building activities will include a regulatory review into the development of renewable energy projects, the development of a technical workforce development plan, and the improvement of its back and front end administrative capacity to enable such activities. And this is passed by the Budget Committee, because it's needed to be approved to start the work, and it is a new budget, and the award is in the packet.
Is there a motion to approve the 3110 Tribal Energy Development Capacity Budget?
I'll make a motion if there are no questions.
Got a motion by Treasurer Chapman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garderpe, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item 7B, Approval of 3211 Community Health Aid Program Budget.
Yes, this is also a budget that came before the Budget Committee, and it is a, a program funded by the Southern Plains Tribal Health Board, and it's entitled Community Health Aid Program, CHAP program. The amount is for $39,000. It's a new budget to kick off the program, and they will be conducting research in our community and service area to see the need of a CHAP here at Pawnee Nation. And this is a new budget, and attached is the breakdown here of how the money will be spent, $39,000, and I, Brian, who will be directing the program?
Right.
You? Tiffany, this will be Tiffany's, okay. So.
And I just wanna clarify that it's the Pawnee Nation that will be conducting the community research, that Southern Plains is, that this award is a sub-award from Southern Plains. Is there a motion to approve 3211?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Treasurer Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Canuho? No further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garderpe, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item seven, under new business, item two, Approval of Resolution 2452, Indian Electric Company right-of-way for the Ledford land. Who will be presenting? Councilwoman Hare or Councilwoman Kimball?
I can speak to it. Donna, do you wanna take this, or do you want me to take it?
I would like for you to take it, since you're in person.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, great. So this is, this was brought into our Property Committee on behalf of Randy Ledford and his wife, who own property out by the lake. They are trying to build out there, and unfortunately, Indian Electric can't, can't cross over this Alati Howell trust land to put in a wire. So all it is, basically, is having the, the electrical wire going across their land in the air, on a pole. So it was kind of a big deal, and, and Randy kinda got to run around a lot. He, they, nobody really knew how to handle it, he brought it to the committee, we approved it. Unfortunately, in order for, for him to move forward, he, he has to have a resolution by S. to take to the BIA, so Indian Electric can run that wire across that land. So it's not impeding, it's not on the ground, it's, you know, people aren't gonna walk through it, it's just up in the air and across, and, and that's where we're at today. So that's why this is, is, is brought to it, and I would, it's, it's a Service One electrical pole on the Ledford land. So I, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2452 on behalf of the Ledfords.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kimball, second by Councilwoman Evans?
President?
Any discussion?
Yes, the only question I have is, is it Indian Electric Company or Indian Electric Co-op? That we need, that's the only, that's the only question I had.
It's the Indian Electric Cooperative out of Cleveland, it has their address on here.
Okay.
And then, I had a question. The, the lump sum payment for the right-of-way, that goes to the landowners, correct? Cause there is a.
I'm really sorry, I just can't hear you, Cynthia.
The lump sum payment for the right-of-way goes to the landowners, cause there is a, a dollar amount on there, on that page.
It's a great question.
Since it's through the BIA, I'm gonna assume that it's gonna go to the landowners?
Yes.
So, I have another question, so are we a part of, are, are we in on the land ownership, and then that's why they're coming to us for it, to the nation?
You're asking me more than I can answer tonight.
Sorry.
You're, you're good, I mean, I, I'm really not, you know, like, real intimate with all this stuff. Let me see, nope, that's not the right one. Okay, hold on, please, let me get Mr. Ledford on the line. I wish.
Well, those are questions for the BIA, actually, cause he would be paying the funding, but I believe it would go to the BIA and then whoever the shareholders are, that easement affects.
And then what would the, so would the President be signing the land, under the landowner's name? That would be, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's part of our land, too. I think we, we have, the tribe has some.
Has a portion.
Some ownership, a portion of that ownership. Do you want me to call Randy?
Cause it says, it says Howell Trust Land, Pawnee County, and then Pawnee Tribe on the application. Tracks or parcel. Tracks or parcel affected by the right-of-way.
Randy?
And then, my other question is, why is, why does the applicant have to come to the nation? Why was we not contacted by the BIA?
Right, well, that, well, that was the whole frustration. Nobody was doing anything, anything to help him, so he brought it to us. Yeah, he brought it to Planning, yeah, he, he brought it to, to land.
Right-of-way, cause even on the term on this application, the term, it says NA.
He's been waiting like a lo, a long, long time for this, yeah. I'm trying, do you have his, anybody have his phone number? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you guys, but I'd like to get this hammered tonight.
And then has he met the bond requirement? Record of notice that the right-of-way was provided to all Indian landowners. See, all of this, like the BIA should be in this process or this discussion, because we don't know that all of that has been done.
I wish he would've come in. I don't think we invited him over here. I thought, I think we thought it was just gonna be easy peasy. Here we go. 2429.
Did you find it?
2429. Okay, it's no good anymore. Well, I think we're stuck between a rock and a hard spot.
Pleasure of the council.
Are we gonna be superseding the Howell's land? Is that what we're doing? As a tribal council?
5, 6, 1, 2, 0, 7, 8, 0. Unknown participant is now joining.
That's why I said on this requirements, required supporting documents for this application.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
If you'll notice on item four, that's what it's saying, record of notice that the right-of-way was provided to all Indian landowners, cause there's a process that if someone is requesting an easement, the letters have to go out to all the landowners, and if any, you know, if anybody doesn't want it or wants to, you know, have any kinda say, then they have a certain period of time that they have to contact the BIA.
Do you think it would be best, since he's not answering, shall we table this to the next meeting and invite him in and try to get this clarified? Would that be helpful?
Or, or if we could just get the clarification and then put it on the next agenda? I'm, I'm for it, but, but you know, the landowner name says Pawnee Nation, allotment number, Howell, landowner interest, undivided interest is our portion, so we are approving our portion of this.
Our portion of it.
So now that I go down further into the thing, and, and then that lump sum will be part of the right-of-way as a whole, it says, so I'm gonna assume that it's gonna go to the, to the BIA and that we are just giving our permission for our part of the land, our portion of the land. I call for, I just call for the vote.
Do we need to change that then? Okay, so in the third whereas, if you look on the last page, it does say Indian Electric Cooperative, so we can make that change.
Okay.
And then this can, you know, if it, if it is approved, once the BIA, you know, if they need additional information, then we can come back and.
Okay.
amended or.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2452 on behalf of the Ledfords with the change to Indian Electric Co-op.
I believe we already had a motion in the Sunday.
We have a motion on the floor, right?
Yeah, you had this.
Okay.
Just with changes.
With changes. With changes.
Okay, let's, any, any further questions or comments? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garderpe, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
She's had a fire drill.
Oh, yeah.
I think that fire drill kinda wasn't for her.
She's in a fire drill. Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
She said leave the laptop. Okay, this brings us to item eight, open forum, do we have anything for open forum? Any announcements? Anything online? Okay, I just want to remind Council of this Friday. You wanna?
So this, this Friday at noon, we have Thompson Construction hosting an owner and sub appreciation lunch. So welcome all Council to come and eat some barbecue, I believe that's what's on the menu. And then, if you like, after we eat, the ones that wasn't able to make the walk-through during the homecoming, we can also extend that out, too, to get a chance to look at it. We got a little bit further since the last walk, a little bit of drywall going up the last couple of days, and getting a little bit more of that siding and, and stuff. So just wanna extend that offer and hope to see y'all there, so, thank y'all.
Any other announcements?
Yeah, and then just a reminder as well, that the Cultural Resources Division is gonna be doing a Heritage Days on Sunday, September 1st, and Monday, September 2nd. On the first will be cultural demonstrations, a meal and a dance to follow, and they welcome anybody, all dance styles. And then on Monday, the second, there'll be a brunch at 10:00 a.m., and then cultural presentations at the Cultural Learning Center uptown, and then a meal at 1:00 p.m. with a hand game to follow, and that will be at the campgrounds.
Thank you for that. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to item number nine, set the next meeting date.
And, and Donna? And Donna asked, because she's doing her teaching on Tuesdays and Thursdays now, that's the reason why she's not here, if we could maybe possibly consider moving some of, you know, one or two month, Monday, Wednesday or Friday.
I don't know if you caught that at the end of the speaking of that.
Yeah.
So we're looking at, the next meeting will be September the 3rd, if we're going by the 1st and 3rd Tuesday. That's going to be right after Labor Day as well.
Yep.
So would you want to do it on the 5th or keep it the 3rd?
I'm good with the 3rd.
3rd.
What is the 3rd?
All right, next meeting date will be September the 3rd at 5:30. That leads us to item 10, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Got a motion by Vice President Canuho, second by Secretary Gardner P. And it is 6:24 PM.
Everybody's in favor.
Thank you, oh, anyone? Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, extensions, hearing none, 6:24 PM. Good catch, George, good catch.